Call the meeting to order. Commissioner Wayans.
Good morning. I would ask that we take a moment, silent reflection and prayer if you will, keeping your thoughts and prayers, everyone in this country of ours, especially the folks in Florida, and certainly the folks at Fort Meade, just left there. And it's an interesting place today. There's a lot of tension. So I would ask that we take a moment to reflect on all of us, keep the men and women and our armed forces in public safety, in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you. Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge of the flag.
The Republicans' citizens alike, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we move on to Positively Carol, we do have a public hearing this morning. If anyone would like to sign up for the public hearing, there is a sign up sheet in the back. So make sure you sign up for that if you plan to speak at the public hearing this morning. Now, would you want to move on to Positively Carol? I think Commissioner Weaver, Mr. FFA himself, will read the proclamation.
I don't know about that. We have some people in the room that definitely, I think...
You told me to say that.
Oh, okay. Taking over that, but thank you for letting me take care of this proclamation. This is one that goes way back, and I want to thank the advisors and the members here today for coming in and recognizing FFA Week. Let me read the proclamation, and I'm going to have the advisors come up and introduce the people with us, and maybe just have a photo op here at the time. Whereas FFA and agriculture education provide a strong foundation for the youth of America and the future of food, fiber, natural resources system; and whereas FFA promotes premier leadership, personal growth, career success among its members; and whereas agriculture education and FFA ensure a steady supply of young professionals to meet the growing demands of science, business, and technology of agriculture; and whereas the FFA motto, learning to do, doing to learn, learning to live, living to serve, gives direction of purpose to those students who take an active role in succeeding in agriculture education; and whereas FFA promotes citizenship, volunteerism, patriotism, and cooperation. Now, therefore, we, the Commissioners of Carroll County, do hereby proclaim, February 17th to 24th, 2018, as FFA Week in Carroll County invite all citizens to take due note of its observance, adopted this 16th day of February, signed by all five Commissioners. Mr. Guaman, Joe, would you guys come up to the front here and introduce your people with you? Mr. Guaman? I mentioned Joe Lenthagum, newly retired in this event, and welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Yes, I retired last June, but I am the regional representative of the Maryland FFA for Carroll, Baltimore, and Hartford Counties, so I thought it would be appropriate to be here this morning. But I'll pass on to Mr. Guaman, but Francis Scott Key, which is near and dear to me. Ms. Shelby Althoff is the replacement for my... Now let her introduce her two members. Shelby?
I'm Shelby Althoff. I'm the new FFA advisor at Francis Scott Key, as Mr. Joe just said. With me today, I have my President Tiffany Green and my junior advisor Tessie Went.
Hello, I'm Aaron Guaman from Westminster High School, FFA chapter. I have our President, Mr. Henry Brunet, and our Vice President, Ms. Lisa Ramsden.
Hi, I'm Diane Safar. I'm from Winters Mill, FFA, and I have with us Chloe Dustin is our chapter president. And we also brought with us Ms. Autumn Lippi, and she is the state, from the State Association. She is our state president.
Okay, could we...
I'm Amber Legor. I'm the current president of the South Carroll FFA chapter.
Thank you, guys, for coming. Could we bring everybody down for the presentation and a picture?
Yep.
Do you have my emails?
Yeah. I can find them. I got yours.
Denise has it.
Okay.
Twice in less than a week.
There you go.
Yeah, short people in the front.
I say.
I'm used to it.
There you go.
Miss Safar in here.
Scoot on in.
Can you get us all or not?
I got you all.
Get the wine angle for me.
Look right here. Everybody smile.
Hey, 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 hey.
Ready?
Oh, okay, thanks.
One more. Sorry. I want it to be just right. Very good. Thank you.
I'm glad you clarified.
It's really nice to see some familiar faces in the audience today, and thank you,
guys, for what you do.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. That's okay.
Have to work for a living?
Not that I blame you.
Trust me.
All right. First item on the agenda, besides that.
Wait a minute. Any more positive?
Oh, sorry. Any other positives, Karen? Sorry about that.
Yeah, I got one thing or two.
You're really such a positive guy.
Yeah, well, not really this morning, but I'm trying. Friday evening, I had the opportunity to read a proclamation when we dedicated the gymnasium at Francis Scott Key to Louis Beard. Mr. Beard was an incredible individual. I had the opportunity to be a student under him when he was principal there. And it's interesting to me because he served 20 years at Francis Scott Key High School, which is incredible. And I know that they've changed their procedures now, apparently, at Carroll County Public Schools, where a principal gets scooted around. I'm not sure I agree with that, because when you have an individual like Mr. Beard, who runs a school in the way in which he ran it, and then all of a sudden, you're plucked and taken away and put somewhere else. I get the positive effect that you could probably bring to a new school, but when you get entrenched and the kids and the families know you, man, that goes a long way. And we've got serious trouble in our country right now with our young people. And I'll go on record saying I think it's wrong when you have an administrator that is doing good stuff, and then all of a sudden gets moved. You know, just a personal opinion. Don't want to get into the politics here.
Who are you talking about, Steve?
Well, the principal, they move their administrators now, so...
And teachers.
And teachers as well. So anyway, that aside, it was a very positive event the other night. The place was full. I saw classmates that I hadn't seen in quite some time. Gail, you weren't there, so that's rude. Anyway, it's only because you're sitting back there. Anyway, congratulations to the Beard family. His wife was there, and his daughter, and the granddaughter, who plays on the basketball team. So the legacy continues over there, and he was a tremendous individual. So when you get a chance to go to Francis Scott Key High School now, it is the Louis v. Beard Gymnasium over there. So kudos to all those people.
Yeah, I remember. He did a great job, and I assume you spent a lot of time in the principal's office is how you know him so well?
I got to know him pretty well, only because of all the good stuff I did.
Okay.
Anybody else have anything else for Positively Carol? All right, then we will move on to our first agenda item, which is a public hearing on Change Incorporated FY 2018 Community Development Block Grant Application. Ms. Christine K., Mike Schreiber, and is Tim Burke going to run it?
He came prepared today.
He's running. Well, his pace is quicker than what it typically is. You know, when you see an attorney run or quick in their pace, you might want to hang on.
I didn't want to say that part.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is a public hearing for the fiscal year 2018 Community Development Block Grant Funding under the Special Projects category. This is for Change Inc. to conduct strategic program services space planning. With me is Christine K., Director of Citizen Services, and Mike Schreiber from Change. He's going to explain what he wants.
And there's your...
Very straightforward today.
It always then comes to this side of the table, doesn't it? Well, thank you very much, Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to present this request once again. Change Incorporated is seeking support to conduct a strategic space planning study of our current facility located at 115 Stoner Avenue in Westminster. The purpose of the study is to evaluate not only our facilities and the building, but also the utilization of the space in our 15,000 square foot facility, which was built approximately 30 years ago. The hope of the study and the outcome of the study would be to provide a master plan that would give us options going forward as to the possible renovations or expansion of the building, of the facility, and keeping in mind that the genesis behind this is twofold. Number one is, we want to ensure as an organization that by year 2022, that we have facilities that are in full compliance with the spirit and intent of the Community Settings Rule, which is being enacted by Medicaid, which is our primary funding source. And secondarily, it was identified by the Board of Directors in our strategic plan as one of our key objectives within our three strategic initiatives for this year. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions on the board?
I'm... You have questions? Is this grant coming from the state government or directly from the federal government?
State, CDBG, Community Development Block Grant. Sorry. It is HUD money.
Excuse me?
It is federal money. It's HUD money through the Department of Housing and Community Development.
I've asked this question before, and I'm going to ask it again, just to be safe. Tim, I'm directing this to Tim. Tim, upon accepting this money, will the grant agreements have any language at all which in any way, shape, or form would bind the county to any changes in its existing development policies, housing composition, anything along those lines? Or is this separate and discreet from that?
No. Not this one.
Thank you. I move the Board of County Commissioners, close the public hearing.
Well, we haven't done the hearing yet.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
That good, Mike?
Too fast.
What do you got? You know how I feel. You got a lunch date or something?
You said you were taking me out for lunch.
Any other comments for the board?
This is a public hearing. It was advertised in the Carroll County Times on February 7th, and we do have one comment from Mr. Robert Sagorsky. You could come to the microphone.
Better pay closer attention.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name's...
We were not trying to cut you off.
No, not to overstay the sale, so I'm thinking great. I'm a member of the Board of Directors of Change. I've spent my career in the financial services industry, mostly as the CFO for Zurich Financial Services Company. But my most important job was as a parent and caregiver for my daughter Amy, who is 30. Amy is a client of Change, has been for about eight years. She lives at home with my wife and I, but she attends a daily program at Change. And I also had a son, Benjamin, who was a client of Change for four years. Benjamin passed away in October of 2016. So I'm very familiar with the wonderful work that Change does because of our affiliation through me and Ben, and from my service on the board, very aware of the wonderful work that they do for the most vulnerable people in our community. And as a member of the board, we have charged the management team with coming up with enhancements to the facility to better serve the population of Change. There are about 130 people or so every day that are in the building, about 90 clients, such as my daughter, and about 40 support staff or administrative folks. And the building is, Mike mentioned, it's a 30-year-old building. It's not been renovated in that 30-year period, so we need to bring it up to speed with today's requirements under the Community Setting Rule. So we believe our current program space doesn't support the services and programs provided under the Community Setting Rule, and many aspects about the current space that are dated, inaccessible, inadequate, and not functional. So on behalf of the Board of Directors, I respectfully request that the Carroll County Board of Commissioners support our request for $25,000 in funding to complete our strategic program space planning study. Thanks for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Mr. President, we have no other public comments.
All right. No other public comment? Now, we didn't contain the motion.
I changed my mind. I move the Board of Commissioners, close the public hearing, leave the record open for 10 days.
You have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All is in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
All right. Next item on the morning agenda, grant application for Chesapeake Bay Trust Restoration Research Award Program. We should have Tom DeVilis, Gail Ingalls, Kelly Martin. So I see. Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
The Bureau of Resource Management is seeking the board's approval to submit an application to the Chesapeake Bay Trust Restoration Research Award Program for $96,276 to perform an evaluation of the impact of innovative design modifications to upland stormwater best management practice retrofits to buffer stream temperatures in urbanized watersheds. The Bureau, in partnership with the Center for Watershed Protection, will be studying three types of best management practices and their efficiency in reducing thermal impacts to receiving waterways. Results will determine if implementation of stormwater management wet pond retrofits can buffer stream temperatures similar to results found using wetland systems. This information will assist the county in its design of stormwater projects to address the requirements of the county's National Pluton Discharge Elimination System Permit. In addition to the grant request of $96,276, we have a county match of $26,500 for a total project cost of $122,776. Any questions?
So I'm going to oversimplify, because I don't understand this that well, but are we basically trying to understand whether or not buffering these waters by letting them accumulate into the type of pond before releasing them downstream would might have a positive, well, might reduce the temperatures? Is that basically the theme here?
Yes. And currently, we have used three watersheds in the county, which only allow a temperature of 68 degrees. And we're finding that we have some types, sometimes we have problems with implementing practices there that are cost-effective as far as nutrient reductions go. So what we're looking at is, we have several practices that we have been using in the past and want to maybe start to use, but we want to test these to see what type of temperature flows are coming out of them in order to allow these practices to be put in like a used-three watershed where trout are existing.
So if we look at existing streams and measure the temperature of flowing water, which of course, part of the energy is in the form of kinetic energy, and then where water, I'm sure we have places in the county where water already ponds in places where there's no longer really kinetic energy because it's stationary, don't we have any data at all from existing areas where moving water has pulled into a stationary pond? Because I mean, the question I'm asking myself is, once it pulls into a pond, there's also the possibility it could be heated.
Right.
Being stationary, and it could have a negative impact. Don't we have some anecdotal data or empirical data from existing natural watersheds, water bodies that we can...
The idea behind this grant is to, the types of facilities that we're looking at are shallow wetlands, gravel lens at the bottom, where we would draw off the bottom of the facility.
Of course, it would be cooler on the bottom.
Right. And then the other facility would be your basic bottom drawdown. And currently, these types of practices are not allowed in the used-three watersheds, and we've run into various problems associated with these types of practices when we've tried to put them into the watersheds. So what we're hoping to achieve here is, over three years, what we will do is, we'll monitor prior to the facility going in, and then we'll monitor, we'll put the facility in, and then we'll monitor a year later to see what type of temperatures are being...
So these ponds will have to be several feet deep, then?
Right. Well, some of them...
So you can draw off the bottom.
Yes. Some of them are actually like three-foot pools, which would be the shallow wetlands. And then we have six-foot ponds of water, which would be the bottom drawdown. And then Willow Pond, for example, in Westminster, we're going to put a gravel lens in, which is, the bottom of the facility would be completely filled with gravel, about a two-foot gravel lens would be put in, and then we'll draw off the bottom of that lens where the cold water will hopefully be accumulating in the pond.
You have 13,000 in equipment.
Yes.
Is this monitoring equipment?
Yes, sir.
Do we already have that equipment?
We don't have enough equipment. We do have some of it, but we're going to have to purchase some as well.
We're just trying to, in my opinion, get ahead of, I guess, the state or the national regulations on this, so we have the information available to us, so that when we try to put these practices in for other areas, we can say, look, we already have the information. This is actually what it does to the streams, therefore, we should be allowed to do it this way. Is that what we're doing here?
We're looking for a change in what's being required now, or accepted now as the normal.
Okay.
And at the end of this, by working with the Center for Watershed Protection, they're going to write a paper on it, and then we're going to present at various venues in order to get these regulations changed.
So we have the information up front to show that we should, it might be allowed to do it this way.
Correct.
The ways are currently being done. Right.
And just to remind you, two years ago, you allowed us to move forward with a grant for the stormwater pond outfalls. And we're currently into the second year that we were awarded that grant. And what we're trying to prove there is that our stormwater facilities are discharging at a slower rate based on the design, and they're actually restoring the stream channels without us physically going into the stream channel itself. So we're hoping to receive credit at the length of the stream channel that's been restored from the outfall of our stormwater ponds. So we're in the second year of that. We're building the facilities now, and then we'll be doing monitoring after they are constructed to determine what benefit those facilities have to our waterways.
So again, Carroll County is ahead of the curve by getting this stuff done, and if this works out well, other counties can use the exact same technology for probably costing less money as well.
Absolutely. That is the idea behind all this.
Is this a pilot program or not? Or is this something that's been done elsewhere?
I believe that this has been done in other states, but I don't know that it's been done in Maryland.
Interesting. Okay.
Any other questions?
If not, I'll make the motion that we approve the submittal to grant to the Chesapeake Bay Trust Restoration Research Award Program. And the amount of, well, the entire grant's 96,276. That's just the part for the grant, right? The other part's the matching. By the way, the matching's coming out of funds that we have available currently.
That will be coming out of our operating, the 13,000 for staff time is already included in the operating, and then the other will be coming out in operating as well.
Okay. There's the motion.
I'll second it.
Whatever. If you follow along.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All is in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good, good.
Thank you.
Very well done on that, too. I love to do something that nobody else has done.
That's why I went to Key.
It's good stuff. That's exactly why you went to Francis Scott Key High School, Gail. Right, Tom? Boom.
Thank you all.
The next item is a request approval to use term contract for renovations to accommodate state-required mail-in electronic courts equipment. Jeff Castaway...
Where'd you go to school, Jeff?
Should could be Massachusetts.
Okay.
Whatever it is.
Good morning, Commissioners. Here today for a briefing discussion, possible decision to award, if you so choose, electrical renovations at the historic and circuit courthouses for the Maryland Electronic Court Program to our term contractor, Eastern Sales and Engineering Company. Here today to provide details on the project is Building and Construction's Project Manager, Yeti Ibatoye, Bureau Chief Eric Perdin, and we also have Tiffany Walker here from our IT department to assist to answer any questions they may have, but I'll pass it over to Yeti to provide some details.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
The MDAC project is a statewide integrated judiciary system that aims to improve access to justice, improve public safety, promote fair and efficient administrative justice with the use of reliable technology solutions. And the new systems are required to run on state-provided equipment, and Carroll County has to provide, prepare the space for the equipment when they come. The work involved, we have to do electrical work and some mailwork. We have chosen to use Eastern Sales Electric Company because they are well-qualified, they have a proven track record of integrating the same system in other jurisdictions in the state of Maryland. When they submitted their SOQ for, as one of our term contractors, they were rated the highest, and they actually had the lowest rates compared to the other term contractors that we chose. They are also located here in Westminster, and we think that that's also a plus factor in our consideration.
So what we're doing is, is to accommodate the state system. So we're going to make modifications to the building and electrical work, so when the new system comes in, we can put it in and hook it up and so forth, correct?
Pretty much.
So are we running AC power plus fiber lines?
It's going to be electrical and, yes, data lines.
Okay, to all eight of the courtrooms? To all the courtrooms?
Yes, all of the courtrooms.
So it's about $4,000 per courtroom to retrofit them. And does the state provide, then, the system we need for everything, for the electronic data and scheduling and all that?
Yes, all of the equipment is coming from the state.
So we don't really have a choice in this, do we?
Actually, not all the equipment is being paid for by the state, but it's coming from the state. We'll be using the state's equipment. But yes, we don't have a choice. This is a statewide system. We're the 18th, 19th, and 20th counties to implement this. 17 others have gone live in the state so far.
We already have, and our judges already have terminals that are live at the bench. What does this bring?
to justice, improve public safety, promote fair and efficient administrative justice with the use of reliable technology solutions. And the new systems are required to run on state-provided equipment, and Carroll County has to provide, prepare the space for the equipment when they come. The work involved, we have to do electrical work and some mailwork. We have chosen to use Eastern Sales Electric Company because they are well-qualified, they have a proven track record of integrating the same system in other jurisdictions in the state of Maryland. When they submitted their SOQ for, as one of our term contractors, they were rated the highest, and they actually had the lowest rates compared to the other term contractors that we chose. They are also located here in Westminster, and we think that that's also a plus factor in our consideration.
So what we're doing is, is to accommodate the state system. So we're gonna make modifications to the building and electrical work, so when the new system comes in, we can put it in and hook it up and so forth, correct?
Pretty much.
So are we running AC power plus fiber lines?
It's gonna be electrical and, yes, data lines.
Okay, to all eight of the courtroom, to all the courtrooms?
Yes, all of the courtrooms.
So it's about four thousand dollars per courtroom to retrofit them?
And does the state provide then the system we need for everything, for the electronic data and scheduling and all that?
Yes, all of the equipment is coming from the state.
So we don't really have a choice in this, do we?
Actually, not all the equipment is being paid for by the state, but it's coming from the state. We'll be using the state's equipment, but yes, we don't have a choice. This is a statewide system. We're the eight, I think, eighteenth, nineteenth, and twentieth counties to implement this. Seventeen others have gone live in the state so far.
We already have, and our judges already have terminals that are live at the bench. What is this, what does this bring into the courtroom that we don't have right now in terms of functionality? Is it CAP video?
It's more or less meant to be, they don't call, they don't quite call paperless, it's something to the effect of documents on demand, I think is what they're calling it. So everything that, before a case starts would be filed electronically, and so it can be shared statewide, the documents can be shared electronically, and anybody that would want a paper copy could get that up.
And we don't have enough power and broadband capability inside the courtrooms now to do that?
We do not, we, there's gonna be monitors at each jury box, so there'll be an additional four or five monitors. The judge will be able to control what goes to each monitor.
Okay.
Who happens on monitor, the witness name will have a monitor.
Your vision for the future here, I think, spells out a lot of that. Wow, it's a lot of-
Oh, here we go.
A lot of use in it, and I think you also give a good recap of that, prior to that, what it's gonna do and what's gonna enhance, so.
Okay, I'm good.
My vision for the future would be that when the state asks us to do something, they pay for it.
That's a nice vision.
But it still comes out of your taxpayers' pockets.
I understand that, but you know, with everything that we do in this county, and it seems like we get less and less assistance from the state, this is another area that, you know, if we're, if we're being forced to do this, and I'm not, that's not go the wrong, it's not turned down the wrong road here, I'm on a paved road, not gravel. Boom.
A few speed bumps.
If it's, yeah, well, if it's something we're being forced to do and it's their equipment, they should pay for it. This is ridiculous. I just, you know, again, something that-
The book stops here.
Yeah, I mean, every penny counts, and, you know, so as we enter this lovely season we're getting ready to enter into, you know, here's another thirty-two thousand dollars that we're spending.
Has this been budgeted?
Yes, it was approved in last year's budget. The total project budgeted is three-hundred-and-thirty thousand.
From our budget?
Yes.
Yeah, so, yeah.
You rest your case.
So, you know, just, and I know me sitting here preaching's not gonna change that, but again, the message needs to be, when you're making us do these things, could you just give us a little bit of help? I mean, even a fifty-fifty thing would have been wonderful. So, there's my sermon for the day.
Now how do we end up with Eastern Sales-
No disrespect, I know you did a great-
How do we end up with Eastern Sales and Engineering rather than a competitive bid on this? How do we end up with that?
They're a term contractor.
Oh, we have them already. Okay, very good, okay. All right, well, I'll move the Board of Commissioners to approve the use of Eastern Sales and Engineering Company to complete the electrical renovations to the courtrooms for MDEC, that's M-D-E-C, in the amount of thirty-two thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars and sixty-two cents.
You have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any further?
I know he's-
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
And I'm opposed.
Opposed?
Only because, not because of the project, but because I'm opposed to paying for things that the state is mandating us to pay for, not giving us any assistance.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is fair.
I have to say, it happens way too often, but-
Yeah, each, each one of these things continues to happen.
You're right, you're right, Steve.
And I'm not-
Sometimes having a single vote like that, that sends a message, and you sent the message today, and it's a valid message that you sent.
I wouldn't go that far.
All right, we're moving on to agendas.
Make a motion, we do not support the agendas.
Second.
We can get out of here right now, I'm all for that.
I withdraw my second.
What?
You could have had a positive vote on that one.
Can I hold up one?
All right, we go to the week of Monday, February nineteenth. County offices are closed in celebration of President's Day.
And I do make a motion that we get rid of the picture that's on here.
I think that makes the whole page.
There's gotta be a second to that.
I'll second that.
Yeah, see, there it comes. There I am, aye, there it is, done.
Motion's denied. Okay, Tuesday, February twentieth, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, County Office Building, nine AM with Commissioner Wance. At two o'clock that day, we have the Veterans Advisory Board meeting in Westminster with Commissioner Weaver. On Wednesday, February twenty-first, at ten AM, Maryland Association of Counties Tax Subcommittee Meeting in Annapolis with Commissioner Wance. We'll go, also at ten o'clock, Maryland Association of Counties Land Use Subcommittee Meeting in Annapolis, Commissioner Rothschild. Then at ten-thirty that same day, Maryland Association of Counties Legislative Committee Meeting in Annapolis with Commissioner Wance and Rothschild. On Thursday, February twenty-second, we have a public hearing on transportation grant.
Excuse me, one minute. That public hearing will be pulled because they didn't receive any comments, so they don't need to hold it.
So there's no public hearing?
Correct.
All right, then we go to a briefing discussion on an update of North Carroll High School. Is that still in there?
Postponed.
Okay.
Wow, wait a minute, going back to the-
You're not doing too well.
Yeah, well, I think we're doing fine. Because you know what the motion was originally, to get rid of the agendas. Just a quick question on the public hearing. Don't we still have them to allow those that haven't submitted anything to be able to commit and say something? I thought that was the purpose of the public hearings.
That's, that's the, it's a very tortured way the state or federal government, not us.
Okay.
These are the rules.
Okay, that's, I'm just asking, because-
You make the announcement that if anyone questions it, then we hold a public hearing. It's really weird, we do it every year that way.
Well, I'm all for getting, you know, if we can eliminate some public hearings here and there, but I just, it's just process question that I had, that's all.
Yeah, it's, it's not our process, it's their prescribed process.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Could we do that with other subjects? Go ahead.
Okay, possibly the first item would then be additional discussion on Public Safety Training Center Phase Two. Still on? Okay.
So far so good.
We're going to request approval to submit payment for expenditures in the Keystone Project. At three o'clock that day, we'll have a long-term advisory council meeting in the Reagan Room, Commissioners Howard and Rothschild. Six o'clock, we're gonna go to Department of Planning Comprehensive Rezoning Public Information Center at the Mountain Area Senior Center, Commissioner Rothschild. On Saturday, February twenty-fourth, Celebrating America History Day in Wintersboro High School in Westminster, Maryland. And on Sunday, the twenty-fifth, we have the Commissioners Report with Commissioner Frazier at eight in the morning. And eleven-thirty AM, we have a Boy Scout Eagle Court of Honor Ceremony with Commissioner Weaver. We'll move on to Week Two. On Tuesday, February twenty-seventh, at two o'clock, Economic Alliance of Greater Baltimore Board of Directors Meeting, Commissioner Wance in Baltimore. At seven o'clock, we have a public hearing on Chapter Thirty-Fourth Ethics Department, that will be County Office Building in the Reagan Room. Kind of backwards on here. Wednesday, February twenty-eighth, at ten AM, Maryland Association of Counties Tax Subcommittee Meeting in Annapolis, Commissioner Wance. Ten o'clock, we also have the Maryland Association of Counties Land Use Subcommittee Meeting in Annapolis, Commissioner Rothschild. And at ten-thirty, Maryland Association of Counties Legislative Committee Meeting in Annapolis with Commissioners Wance and Rothschild. Thursday, March first, we're starting with request approval to, of Citizen Participation Plan and Anti-Displacement and Relocation Plan. So, okay, we're gonna move to a request for final approval for Change Incorporated FY-2018 Community Development Block Grant. After that, we're going to request approval to develop grant application FY-19 Community Development Block Grant. Then we're going to request approval to submit application for volunteer Maryland slash AmeriCorps member departments. After that, we request acceptance of FY-19 Promoting Safe and Stable Families Program Grant Award. We'll have additional discussion, possibly. No?
Well, if we're gonna remove that other one, then this'll come off.
All right. Take that off. Then we move to code modifications on Chapter One-seventy for construction codes, with discussion, possible decision. We're gonna move at four o'clock, we have Governor Hogan's Plan for a Better Maryland in the County Office Building in the Reagan Room with Commissioners Frazier, Wance, Weaver, Howard, and Rothschild. On Friday, March second, we have South Carroll High School fiftieth anniversary grand rededication in Sykesville with Commissioner Frazier. And Sunday, March fourth, Commissioners Report with Commissioner Rothschild.
I'd like to add something to the schedule. On Tuesday, February twenty-seventh, at six-twenty PM, prior to the public hearing, I'm going to hold my own press conference in this room to review flaws-
Downstairs.
Oh, downstairs. To review, to analysis of the flaws and long-term implications of the proposed ethics ordinance. Six-twenty PM, Tuesday, February twenty-seventh.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah, I have, I have something. In the past several days, well, I've spent the last two days in Annapolis, and then this morning down in the Fort Meade area, I continue to hear the counties that are jumping on board with the pharma lawsuits. And I suspect that that, many of the counties are already involved with them, and I think we had the opportunity to do that, but I think the decision was made based on the attorneys that we were being represented by. I'm not asking that we move forward, I'm just planting the seed, if you will, that I believe Carroll should get on board with this as we fight this opioid crisis in the state.
This is the lawsuit that we're suing the companies producing opioids?
That's correct. And, you know, I'm not sure how that's gonna come out, I'm sure it's gonna be tied up for years, but if it's similar to the way in which the tobacco thing came about, and I think you all remember that, there were billions of dollars that came back to state and local jurisdictions to be used for health initiatives as it was, as it pertains to those that had been either smokers or what have you. I suspect that we'll see something very similar with these lawsuits. So I think we should instruct our staff to look at what the surrounding jurisdictions are doing. I had a conversation with County Executive Schu this morning from Anarundel County, and they've jumped on board, and several other jurisdictions around us have also, and I just, I'm afraid if we don't and become involved in this, we're gonna miss out on some funding that could come back to us to help with the opioid situation, too. So I'm instructing staff to look into it. Again, I know we were presented with the opportunity to do it, but somebody didn't like the lawyer that was there, and I don't, I'm not getting into that, but we need to see who's doing what, and if we need to piggyback or we need to become involved, I think we should do that, and if it requires some kind of funding, I think we should absolutely think about where that would come from and become involved in these, in the lawsuit here. So, there's my open agenda item for the day.
Let's have staff look into it and get back to us.
Presentation?
Well, yeah, even if it's that, you know, again, I think it's, I think it's important because I suspect that we're gonna see a, I don't wanna call it a windfall, because that's certainly the wrong term, but as we continue to struggle with this, and I heard the numbers out of Anarundel County today, and they, they're mind-boggling. There are twenty-five thousand people that are addicted to opioids in Anarundel. Now, I don't know how they came up with that figure, but I guess they did. And I would suspect that, you know, they've got a population of, what, five-hundred thousand down there, and we're at a hundred-and-seventy, so certainly we're a much smaller scale, but I would suspect that the percentages, when you look at those that are affected here, too, I bet it's really, really similar, just on a smaller scale because of the fact that we have less of a population here. But, but it's time to look into this, and because of the fact that, again, all of us, all of the surrounding jurisdictions are doing it, I think we've gotta, we gotta do something here instead of just sitting back and saying, "Yeah, gosh, that's a good idea. Why didn't we do that? Oh, because we didn't like the lawyer." Really? So, no disrespect to anybody, but we need to delve into this and see if, see what the possibilities are for us to be moving forward with this.
Well, I'm willing to look into it, but I have concerns, but I'm going to look at it with an open mind. You know, first off, the drug companies don't prescribe these medicines, doctors prescribe them. The doctors determine the dosage, the doctors determine the number of days of dosage, the doctors are aware of the addictive qualities of these things, and I do have some concern that going after the drug companies because that's where the wealth is, is scapegoating them. There have been some unintended negative consequences of prior suits like this. Case in point, Lyme's disease, where suits against drug companies because of ineffective or problematic drugs related to Lyme's disease has shut down basically all drug treatments for Lyme's, and now we've got victims across the country, in this county, thousands and thousands of Lyme's victims that don't have any hope for a cure because we've basically discouraged drug companies through lawsuits from pursuing them. Opioids are a problem, they are being abused, but they also provide, they serve useful purposes also properly prescribed in very limited quantities. I know, I've been rushed to the hospital in grave pain and understand the benefit of things like Dilaudid and things that it can do to provide comfort to people, properly used and prescribed. I think that what this opioid crisis has done for me is it's made me aware that having these bottles of medicine where you get thirty or forty pills, and you only need two or three of them to get through, you know, two days of an operation, is a real source of mischief. And I, and I think that the proper, I suspect that the proper solution to this is for doctors to be prescribing these pills in the future, these medicines, opioid medicine in the future, probably in quantities of one-tenth of what they've been prescribing, so that people don't use them simply because they've got a bottle of them. I know I've received medicines and I've taken one or two of the pills and then stuffed the whole bottle with thirty more pills in my medicine cabinet, never to look at them again until I threw them out because they were, they were old. But I do worry that we'd be scapegoating the drug companies. I mean, we've had, you know, similar types of lawsuits and things like firearms, you know, where there've been attempts to sue firearms manufacturers because guns have been abused. I'm not sure that the drug companies are the problem, I really think the problem has been prescription regiments that have been too generous with these drugs. That's my personal view.
And you're certainly entitled to that, you know, and I do respect that, I really do, but I, I look at this, I guess, in a similar way with the big tobacco and the way that that all came down. And I suspect you'll see something similar here because, you know, you've pointed out all areas that are troubling, and, you know, one of those is, you just said two of them. You know, you get prescribed thirty pills for pain that you need two for-
Right.
And then you put it in your medicine cabinet, and now what happens, you know, if you get burglarized or what have you, they're burglarizing you for the medicine cabinet, not for the cash that's sitting on the counter. As a matter of fact, you'll look at incidents and the written reports that are accompanying them, they went by the cash to get to the pills. So it's interesting, and you bring up valid points. And I'm not suggesting that we jump here, I'm only suggesting that we, we get the details so that we, if, if we see that it's a legitimate way in which to go here, that we have the ability to be able to do that and not be, not be reactive when we should be being, when we should be proactive here with this, with this. Now, is this the, is this the magical cure? No, but I think it sends a message, and I think you already see that they're prescribing less of these medications when you, when you come out of healthcare facilities, you know, folks are getting less and less. So, so, I don't know, I mean, it's all gonna come down to money, let's, let's face it, that's where it is, but let's be clear, I'll be blunt, if we can get some of that money similar to the way that we did with the big tobacco, to use it for positive things in our county to combat this crap, then boom, we should be rolling.
Well, I understand that, but I personally would never wanna get engaged in a lawsuit if I thought that the moral grounds for it were not there. If there's evidence that some particular drug company has misrepresented their drug, deliberately recommended dosage that was higher, and there's some evidence of subterfuge in an attempt to deliberately promote addiction, then that would certainly morally justify the lawsuit. But if it's simply a matter, well, we can get them and they manufacture it, I would not consider that to be sufficient moral grounds to pursue them for financial awards.
All right, well, we'll have staff look into this and then give a report back to us.
Yep, thank you.
Anything else?
I don't know, I got a whole list. So next-
But that's enough, okay. So we need a motion to adjourn?
You wanna do it, Weaver? You want me to do it?
No, go ahead. I've jumped the gun too much.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that, though.
Motion second, all those in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Short day. Short day.
Want to stay informed about Carroll County Government?